The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassin.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean-François.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight, we have the minutes from the December 15, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve. Massey, seconded by Alden Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Thank you. Mayor, remarks.
Good evening. The first order of business on my agenda is, as we've witnessed nationally, the violence against the Asian community and the -- let me just get my note here. Where many communities are taking a stand against the violence, and so we've issued -- I have issued a proclamation that I'm asking the council support on. I did send it to you about a week or so ago, and it appeared that most of, not all, I didn't hear from everyone, but really were supportive of it. So I'd like to just read it into the record, and then, under new business, you'll have an opportunity to vote on it. Recently, as a nation, we have witnessed a dramatic increase in hate crimes against Asian Americans, and this increase is due to vilification and false statements blaming the Asian population for the worldwide pandemic. And here in the United States, Asians have a long history of dedicated service to our nation, including fields such as healthcare, politics, law enforcement, entertainment, academia, business, and honorably serving within our armed forces. And whereas Asian Americans from all walks of life have and continue to make positive contributions to our city and to our country, now therefore be it resolved that I, Joseph M. Di Stefano, mayor of the City of Middletown, New York, do hereby wholeheartedly condemn discrimination in all of its forms, and I specifically condemn these recent attacks of aggression and hate crimes perpetrated against Asian Americans, and ask the common council of the City of Middletown to unanimously adopt this resolution denouncing these crimes. And let it fairly be resolved that on behalf of the residents of the City of Middletown, we hereby applaud our Asian-American residents and all the Asian-Americans, and thank them for their day-to-day contributions to the betterment of our city and our nation, and signed by myself on this day. So I would hope for support, and hopefully there'll be some comments made by members of the board. Moving on to COVID and the issues that are still facing the city and the county, it's still of a serious nature. You know, we do have a very active site at SUNY Orange, a vaccination site. The numbers for Middletown are still very high. For Orange County, I believe, at one point within the last few weeks, and it may still be the case, we are probably the highest county in the state in regards to positivity, and Rockland also. So as of today, and I believe there is a notice that went to -- we'll be going up to Albany to extend the mask mandate, the local mask mandate, that I issued a few months back in response to our high numbers. For the most part, we do believe people are cooperating. We also recognize that many of our people that live here work in industries that are very much susceptible to, you know, getting the virus, healthcare, supermarkets, and warehouse workers, and things of that nature. But we still have to do more in order to bring this virus down. The more is getting the vaccine. Orange County is announcing, or has announced, that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be accessible to them. There's, if you can go online, it's accessible now to register for that. SUNY Orange is doing them. Local pharmacies have contacted us and said they are also doing vaccines. Some local doctors, I believe, are doing vaccines. So all we can do is encourage everyone to please for maybe, if you're not thinking about yourself, think about your mother, your child. The only way we're going to really reopen schools is if we get this under control. And just continually saying no is because I don't want to get it is not going to be helpful, and is going to prolong the economic problems that we've had as a nation. So the only way out is vaccine, and masking, and social distancing. So we're asking for Middletowners to cooperate, and hopefully they will. As you know, at least everyone knew at the last meeting, that April 1, we reopen City Hall. I was happy that Dr. Johnson did ask me that question today by text message, that when is City Hall reopening? And I thanked him for listening at the last meeting when I put up the same slide and said that City Hall is reopening on April 1. But, so, I want to thank you, Doctor, for paying attention when I was speaking at the last meeting.
Wow.
You could defend yourself later.
Mayor, are you happy? Are you happy?
Yeah, I'm very happy, yes. I'm very happy. So, we're open for business, but we do still have a controlled access. So you must enter the building from the entry between City Hall and the police station. There's a front and rear entrance. When you come up the ramp in the City Hall, there'll be a young man there that will be able to allow you into the building. And we do ask people, of course, that are symptomatic, but any type of symptoms, not to come. You can drop off payments at the door. You can do a lot of business online. You can call the city clerk's office, they can assist you. And we're, by the way, looking into doing more business online, too, as we move forward. So that's one of the positive things that have come out of COVID, is the, if you can say anything positive came out of it, is that a new way of doing business for local government also, and we are doing, make more access to the public online. I've mentioned the mask mandate that expires on April 12, and we are filing with the state another 30-day extension via an extension of the executive order. And this coming April 12 will be the first day for our new garbage can distribution. As you know, the council did pass the, and we have funded, the new way of doing business with sanitation in the city, and sanitation and recyclables. This will be phased in over a period of time. Our current trucks have been adapted with the rear-end tippers. So we will begin as soon as these cans are distributed throughout the city to start picking up. All employees will be, and sanitation will be directed, that they are no longer authorized to attempt to lift the cans. At one point, we did have a 50% of our workman's comp claims came out of sanitation. So not only is this a safety proposal for our employees, but it's also a, over the life of this, will be a pretty significant money-saving opportunity for Middletown taxpayers. We'll be able to reduce almost all routes from three people on a truck down to one route, or one person on a truck. We'll be using a mechanical arm. Those trucks will be coming in in October, and so we're going to ask for a lot of patience by people, by the public, as we get accustomed to this. Every unit will, one in two family homes, I believe in three-family homes, we're finalizing the law, as I think I sent out a draft to you folks. We're still have some decisions to make on how we're going to handle multifamily housing. But in the beginning, we just want everyone to be relaxed to the point, until we get an idea of how much is actually used by each homeowner and each property, in the beginning, we're going to allow you to use both cans for sanitation. So don't get nervous that, you know, you're going to get 195-gallon can, which is basically three gallons, or three garbage cans, traditional 33-gallon cans almost, and 195-gallon recycling bin. You will be able to use on your garbage night both cans, if necessary, in the beginning, until we make adjustments as we move forward. As we monitor things, we're going to be able to tell what kind of flow we have, and how we'll modify the plan as we move forward. So we're going to pick up everyone's trash. We are also going to have inspectors out to make sure that people are using it properly. This includes in our downtown business districts, you must put the garbage in the trash cans that are issued by the city. They are the ones that can be picked up by the mechanical arm, and you can't, if you have an overflow, as I said, use your recycling can for now. Our long-range plan is, when we do finalize, the entire plan will be on holidays, we'll be doing, using the, say, the recycling cans for overflow on holidays, possibly. But we do have a vision on how to implement this, but it is new to us, and it's going to be new to our residents. We do have smaller cans available for people who have trouble maneuvering the large 95-gallon cans. We will have a 35-gallon can and a 65-gallon can. We're finalizing how we're handling downtown. The proposal that I have is that we would give in mixed-use properties, that there would be two sets of cans that would be given to each property. So a store with an apartment above it would be given two sanitation, two MSW cans and two recycling bins. And again, there'll be an opportunity for someone to contract with us for additional, if they need it. My house, I have multiple people in my home, so I will probably have to pay the additional $100 fee to have an additional can because of the flow that I'm anticipating. But most people don't have that many people in a house, so that, you know, a couple will probably, even with, you know, one or two children, will probably be able to get away with just one large can and one small can. We're hoping that recycling will increase. As you know, you've heard every year from me, is our recycling numbers are horrible. We hover around 6%, and just terrible numbers, although now it doesn't have a huge financial impact on us because it's costing us about the same to get rid of recycling as it is to get rid of municipal solid waste. But we expect those markets at some point possibly to turn around again, plus it's environmentally sound for us to do it. So there are environmental benefits, if not financial benefits. So that's where we are. We'll be distributing them April 12. The cans will be, will have a number on them that will be scanned in. They're not transferable. They are owned by the City of Middletown, not by the property owner. And the council, as I said, has the draft proposal, and we're hoping to draft, to adopt that by, at the April 19 meeting, and we'll move forward from there. We also have the downtown parking plan is in its final draft stage. We are planning a meeting April 19 at the senior center with both building owners, merchants, and tenants of downtown. The plan will have a combination of overnight parking permits, long-term parking for employees, multiple-day parking for tenants who want to leave their cars downtown, and we think it's a pretty good plan. Myself, Chief Awanchu, and Maria Bruni have been working on it. Jacob calls it. Myself and the two junior engineers are working on the plan, and at this point, we think it's pretty reasonable. I'm sure there are going to be people that have some opposition to it because of some of the feedback that we get as we walk around, and we also received some good ideas from folks that may be long-term incorporated into the plan. But we'll give you an example of why we need to have that kind of plan in place, is today we paved the Equilibrium Paramount Parking Lot. A couple days ago, we put up signs advising people that this lot will be paved. Your cars cannot be here after 6:00 a.m. on April 6. So we signed it, we gave plenty of warning. You know, there are limits, time limits in the parking lot anyway. Last night, I went by at 8:30 at night, there were 11 cars still in the parking lot, although every other space had a cone and a sign telling people, "You can't park here overnight." The police then start reaching out to the car owners. They run the plates, they get contact information, advising them that, you know, another 100 feet down the road is another lot where you can park your car. Well, by 3:30 in the morning, that 11 cars, rather than going to 3, 4, or 0, became 25 cars. Now, we had a crew coming at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning, or 8:00, whatever it was, to Blacktop. Now we have 25 cars in a lot. So again, the police had to do the same thing. We got it down to five, and they did tow five vehicles. We did get one call from a student, Torah student who lives downtown, who admits he hasn't been to his car for three days. Well, he left his car in a prime spot that does not allow multiple-day parking, and especially Mondays and Tuesdays, and he admits, "I just had no need to go to my car, so I didn't go to my car. I didn't know what was going on." We did Nixle, so we encourage people to do Nixle. We do notifications on Facebook, we do notifications on social media, and he admitted that he did get a call at 6:00 this morning from the Middletown Police Department, but just ignored it. And he didn't want to pay for the tow, which was $190. So there's nothing I can do. I mean, there's, but the point is, is two things. One, you know, you got to call the police department to answer it, especially at 6:00 in the morning. And two, it just shows you that if, as our occupancy in downtown grows, the housing market is huge right now. People want to live downtown, especially younger people, that you, the parking spots, the short-term spots, need to be turned over, both for business purposes, and employees can't park outside their businesses for six, seven, eight hours, so that customers can come in and businesses can thrive. The fact that he was parked there for at least three days indicates that we need to have some modification of our parking ordinances. So keep that in mind as we examine the parking plan. The American Rescue Plan, as you know, City of Middletown will be receiving 12 million in federal funds. We're being told that the first 6 million will come in in May of this year, and additional 6 million next year. We are currently waiting the guidelines on how to allocate and spend the funds, how, what are the potential uses that we can use them for. We do know that we can do some to offset some of the revenue losses and replenish our fund balance. We can also use it for some COVID-related expenses over the last couple of years. And I'm just throwing out some projects that we're working on in City Hall, and some of them will make people happy, I think, too. And keep in mind that this money cannot be refunded to the taxpayers. It's not a tax refund. These are monies that have to be spent on program, capital program, or other programs that will be eligible under the guidelines. So the ONW station, a long time I saw in our community, we're estimating it's probably going to be between a million to a million and a half dollars to demolish it. What we have done, we have retained an engineer that has worked on the project for other businesses, that were potential businesses locating there, and we're asking him, "What will a million and a half buy us regarding that building? Can we stabilize the roof? Can we, can we bring the building up to a certain standard that will enable us to do a business incubator similar to what we did at Woolworths?" As you know, with Woolworths Building, we did a vanilla box. We brought it up to a certain level, and then the tenants, in exchange for very low rent, did the build-out. And is it possible? I have no idea. But I think this is probably the last shot for the ONW, if this council and the community really is interested in saving that building. It's an iconic structure in our community. I think it's worth a shot, so we're going to get some reports and see what that million and a half dollars will buy us. One could argue, what will 3 million buy us? We could throw a million and a half here from the, from this money, and then a million and a half that we would save on the demolition. But let's just get some numbers, and we can, and we'll discuss it further, not only here at the council, but with the community. Were we visiting not a parking garage, but a parking deck in the downtown area? We've talked about sidewalk grants, which are very popular with people in neighborhoods, allocating some of that money either to grants for replacement. One of the discussions was a matching grants of 75% and 25% to individual homeowners. We're discussing some of this new technology about sidewalks that have been put in, maybe in the past 15 or so years, that are in pretty good shape but need to be lifted and adjusted, and refurbishing some of the sidewalks in some neighborhoods. But one of the options, sewer and water infrastructure, it appears that's going to be in a separate bill out of Congress, the infrastructure bill, of $1.9 trillion. So it's something we may not address in this bill, but we'll wait for the next federal grant monies to come forward. We are ready to go. We're bid-ready on many, many projects with water and sewer infrastructure. Police and fire emergency operations, we're already discussing one of the properties that we're acquiring at the psychiatric center, the former psychiatric center, for a new location for the Middletown Fire Police, who are right now, after we sold the Academy Avenue School, have no place. Would actually be a better place for them, a better location. Some of the buildings that we're acquiring are old garages that need renovation, so we can dedicate some of that money there. City court expansion, we're planning, we're very close to, we have reached an agreement with the Office of Court Administration for a new consolidated courts. We are under a mandate to consolidate the court over on South Street in the old federal court building. They wanted us to do a 7 or 8 million dollar expansion and renovation. We fought that for five years now. Again, out of, because of COVID, the court system has redefined itself. They're doing business a different way. They're doing smaller courtrooms now, they're doing some online virtual arraignments. So they've agreed to our layout from our consultant, and we're hoping to have a nice big announcement on that. So the project cost is going to go down from 8, from 7 or 8 million dollars down to under 3 million dollars. And that may include the renovation of the former court for expansion of City Hall. As you know, we have employees in our basement, the police have employees in their basement, and so we can expand both the City Hall operation and the police department operation into the existing court. We have the lighting improvements in our downtown. With the bids on the DRI project, we backed off on the streetlights. They're about 20 years old, and they're showing it, but we had to pull that out of the project. We're, you see the new lightings that we put into the parks, and on the, behind us, the black lights are very nice. So we're looking at what it would cost to expand that throughout the whole district. Looking at a broadband proposal, we've asked Cherry Road to take a look at it, to see what they can do, what it would cost, and also parking lot monitoring for long-term parking. So we're, those are our ideas. You folks, the public, if you have ideas, please forward them to us. They'll all be discussed, and council members also. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to.
What color are the garbage cans?
The, I think they're backwards, and in my opinion, because Jacob disagrees, the garbage can is green, and the recycling can is blue. I thought the recycling can should be green for recycling, and the garbage can a different color.
There are most places, Mr. Mayor, they are in other communities.
I think so, but Jacob will, I'm sure he'll come up here and defend himself.
I've got pictures.
But you have pictures. So that's where we're at with garbage cans, but.
Any questions for the mayor?
They'll be clearly marked, though.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. I have on the council agenda tonight, resolution, looking for your support, to authorize the mayor to sign all documents and certifications regarding our 2021 action plan. That's the yearly plan that we submit to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, for our annual grant, and also for you to authorize us to submit the action plan to HUD. And that's all I have for tonight, if anyone has any questions.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW commissioner?
Good evening, all. We'll start off with the report for Alden and Massey about the reservoirs, and the level in the reservoirs is 100% capacity right now, although we have, we're very dry period, and expecting some rain on Friday, but our reservoirs at full capacity, 100% right now. Also reminding the residents that we are flushing the water system, and we're going to be doing, we started Monday, as has been advertised, first ward and the fourth ward, first and fourth. So please, before you do any laundry, just check your water to make sure that, and look outside, too, make sure we're not flushing outside in your neighborhood, and the water is not, is not dirty or discolored. So please keep an eye on that. The mayor did mention the cooperation between the Equilibrium, Todd Lion Paving, and the City of Middletown. Before you tonight, as a resolution requesting a transfer of fund to cover the costs of asphalt required for paving the parking lot across from the Paramount Theater. Basically, the city bought the asphalt, and Todd Lions, and they had provided the labor, equipment, and the paving to pave it, which we think it's a great deal for us. DPW did some of the prep work, and they're going to be doing the striping for it, and it should look very nice, which is much needed. The mayor spoke quickly about the projects that we have. We are planning for, I mean, tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure, much-needed infrastructure, work that is needed for us in terms of water, especially water lines, rural water lines, that are very old since the dams were established over 100 years ago, and some of them, they go through 30-foot cut underground, very hard to get to, and they are literally our lifeline to provide water for City of Middletown residents, parts of Walkill, parts of Wayanda, even Amos Kitchen, even CPV. So a lot of communities and our own residents are counting on us, so we need to upgrade and replace those water lines. Also, possibly a proposal to explore the development, which is, the mayor spoke about that, of Indigo, as a water source, and that would require, again, you know, millions of dollars in there. And so hopefully that will be something that we can do with all this infrastructure money that is coming. Also, we need to go for Phase 2 and 3 for the 24-inch line and the 20-inch line that supply the city with water from the water treatment plant. Right now, we're constructing a couple of water lines. We want to extend them all the way to the heart of the city, because they're very old. Some of them, they go to 1889, some of the old class iron pipes on Lake Avenue. And also, we want to replace the only low-pressure 24-inch water main that supplies the city with water, two-thirds of the city of water. That is a really serious need for replacement. So this is when they talk about infrastructure, infrastructure, we really feel it, we love it, and we worry about it day and night, and I'm glad that the federal government is doing what they are doing and giving us the funding for the infrastructure. Like the mayor said, we have projects that are ready to go. It's been approved by DEC, such as upgrading our dams at Shuangang Reservoirs. They're about $3 million or so. For Shuangang, we have to do the other, for the same thing for other dams, to widen the spillway, to comply with the current regulations, and that will take, you know, millions of dollars. So we're holding off, starting in construction. Hopefully, we can get something from the federal government, and we can utilize the American recovery, or reinvestment, or whatever name they're going to give it, for our own benefit, to upgrade our infrastructure, which is in very bad need for funding and investment. Yesterday, the mayor signed the contract for New York Rising, which is a 3.5-million-dollar grant from the governor and from the State of New York, and with that, we will be starting the construction on West Main Street to replace the culvert or bridge/bridge West Main Street right at the, by Maple Hill Park. And then we will start the construction on Grant Street, culvert replacement, which is in very bad shape, partially collapsed. We've been babysitting it for a long time, and now we're going to be replacing it. And we got the funding in place. The mayor signed the contract with two contractors, RJ Cruise and Boyce Excavation. Each one will be doing separate projects so that we can expedite it and get it done by February next year. The project must be completed. So a reminder also, yard waste started on Monday. Reminder for the residents, you have to put everything, all your yard waste, grass clippings, in cans, please. And if you have branches, they have to be bound with the string to a length of about three feet, so we can handle it. We can pick it up and put it in the garbage truck. So please work with us. Do not put anything on. Do not put anything on the sidewalk or loose leaves in the street and become dangerous and hazard to the pedestrian and the vehicles. Please work with us. We do that every year. If you have biodegradable bags, by all means, just leave whatever you need in the biodegradable bags, and we'll pick the whole thing up, and you don't have to worry about it. Spring cleanup, I know Alder Menjude, he's the chairman of DPW Committee, he'll be talking about that coming up for the spring cleanup, which is going to start in April 12. The mayor, he talked about the garbage in there, and I just want to dedicate a little bit of time to talk about it, because it's extremely important. He spoke the advantage, about the advantage of having those large cans in there. They're going to be very heavy. We cannot manhandle them to pick them up and dump them. So we modified our garbage trucks in there with the rear tippers, so we can, our guys will not be suffering any kind of physical restraint or harm because of lifting them. They're going to be too heavy to lift. So point is, please do not leave anything outside those garbage cans, the 95-gallon garbage cans. If you do, unfortunately, it's going to be left on the sidewalk, and then the code enforcement officer is going to be coming back as soon as, obviously, the common council approves it, and the mayor signs off on it, the new ordinance. Code enforcement is going to be driving down the road in there after the garbage is picked up. Any garbage that is remaining in front of that house, we're going to take a picture, and you're going to be issued a ticket to appear before the judge. So it's not a threat, it's just we have to clean up, we have to clean up our city, we have to come up with more efficient way of handling our garbage in there, and that is safe for our PR men, and it's more economical for the city, for the taxpayers. That's why we're doing what we're doing. The garbage trucks are going to be delivered in October, like the mayor said, with the mechanical arm. So there isn't going to be two guys chasing the truck every day like we're doing right now, whether it is 20 degrees below zero, whether it is freezing, rain, or ice storm, or 100 degrees outside, or 80 degrees outside in the heart of the summer. It's going to be a whole different thing. So what we need is the cooperation, please, I'm emphasizing this, cooperate with us. Do not leave mountain of small, sharp, right bags on the outside of those cans. Everything has to be inside the can. The mayor explained that if you have too much garbage in one week, you can have an overflow to use the recyclable blue can, right, Alder Rodriguez? Blue, right? The blue? The blue one. You can use it as an overflow can in there to put garbage, and we'll pick it up, because the army's going to come in and pick it up, grab the can, and dump it. And we'll grab the recyclable can that is filled with municipal solid waste, and we're going to dump it for you. But no more on the outside, we just, we can't go ahead and chase those small, sharp, right bags and pick them up. Like the mayor said, then, it's very important, the resolution, the proposal of the mayor before the council is, single family will get two cans, two-family and over will get four cans, meaning two municipal solid waste, two recyclables. Anything more than that, up to a certain number of cans, you can come in and apply for cans, and the proposal of the mayor and myself, too, I take ownership of it, I think it's a fair proposal, is to charge $100 per additional can annually. Otherwise, there will not be any charge for the first two cans if you're a single family, or the first four cans if you are two-family. So you can buy more, not buy more, you can, annually, you can get another can if you want for $100. And that will be my, I will conclude my remarks with this, but we're going to start on the April 12. Again, like the mayor said, dispatching them, the minute we are, the minute we're giving you those cans, please use them. Do not put any more overflow outside them, please. That's very important. So our guys will come in and roll it, dump it into the truck with the tipper, and that will be the end of it. Thank you.
Any word on Wolf's Lair Park?
We've done, like, we have the geotechnical report from the soil engineer in there, and now we are exploring ways to, we, meaning the architect, and the geotechnical engineer, and the contractor, and I'm watching them, to see what's the best way, if they can find an alternate for the, they have an elaborate under-drain system, elaborate one, expensive one, under-drain system. Every 10 feet, you have a lateral that's dug through the center in there, and so on and so forth. So we're trying to find the most efficient way of installing it without becoming hit with large amount of costly change orders because of downtime. Because if you have like a ditch witch or some kind of a machine in there that will dig the small trench, you might get hit with the slab, concrete slab, or a large boulder, or whatever it is in there. So you're going to drag it, you're going to slow down, you're going to get shit material off the site, or bring material onsite. So we are trying to find the most economical way of approaching it right now. The Water and Sewer Services, to a future concession stand, the city will be doing that. The city also is looking into, the mayor and I, we're getting emails over just up to a few minutes ago about potentially adding an irrigation system to this elaborate field in there, because right now, there's no irrigation system, so we're going to consider, discussing it with the mayor, if we should consider it, or get a cost, how much it's going to be in light of the infrastructure. But the point is, things are moving, and we're making progress, and I'm sorry, it's not as fast as you would want it to be, or I would want it to be, or the mayor would want it to be, but we have to deal with these obstacles.
So do we have a timeline?
A timeline is, as soon as we have a resolution for it, we're proceeding 100%. I mean, the contractor is willing. I don't have a timeline yet, because we're just trying to figure out what's the best way, the most economical way of approaching it. But we're on it, it's priority, and we're just going to keep pursuing it. Unfortunately, it's going to take some time.
Orange Rockland is putting new water, gas mains, West Main now going up Monahagan Avenue. They're tearing up sidewalks, they're paving the sidewalks with blacktop. Do we have a timeline when they're going to start repairing?
Yes.
There's some potholes that are-
Yes.
That are very bumpy.
Yes. They are, our roads definitely, they need some attention. If you recall, last year, we did not pave, last year, because of the COVID. So this year, we're waiting for the new appropriation from the federal, from the state, once the state budget is passed, within a couple of days. By the end of the month, this month, or early next month, we'll find out how much CHIPS money we have, because remember, we don't spend our money in repaving our roads. We get all the money from the state. Other communities, they budget their own funds to do additional paving. We never did that. We just rely on the state funding for it. So hopefully, we'll have quite a bit of money accumulated over last year, which we did not use, and this year. And then you will have the $21 million, remember, the traffic operations in there, that's going to be a huge amount, all signalized intersections, they're going to be all ripped up, all the intersections up to 250 feet in each direction.
That's CHIPS money, that's our-
No, no, that's, no, no.
Talking about Orange Rockland. I'm talking about what they're taking up on the streets and our sidewalks.
Right. So Orange and Rockland, we made a deal with them, we're approaching a deal with them, we're just trying to finalize the money in there, on how much, they want to use our contractor, Sunup Enterprises, Sunup Construction, they changed their name, the ones who are doing our ADA curbs and sidewalks, to go and rip out the asphalt and replace it with concrete sidewalk. So the asphalt sidewalk that you're looking at, that's temporary to allow some, then Orange and Rockland are going to pay us in order to use our contractor to replace all these asphalt sidewalks, the temporary ones, with concrete ones. The question's before the mayor and us, and you guys, is do we want to pay additional money in there to replace, rip out the remaining curb and install granite curb? And this is what the mayor and I are talking about in there, and we want to see what the cost is. And hopefully, we can get some funding from one of these $12 million or $2 trillion, one of them is going to give us some money to do the granite curb. So that's where we are. So Orange and Rockland, we're not forgetting about them. Orange and Rockland, really, they jumped through hoops, like I said, the previous council meeting, in order to finish working on the signalized intersections, upgrade all their gas mains, and we coordinated that very closely with them, so that once we do the $21 million, which is federal funding, signalized intersections upgrade, they're not going to come in a couple of years later and say, oh, we're going to replace this gas line now. Couple of years after, we have done, redone the whole intersection all over again. That's, again, that's $21 million of federal funding, that's a lot of money. So that's where we are.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alden McCliner?
Commissioner, if we're going to start distributing the new garbage cans, how is that going to be done? Are, I mean, if people want a smaller can or something, are you just going to be leaving them in houses? Are you going to be contacting people? Are they going to sign up? How is that going to work?
Excellent question. So the way it's going to be is, we're going to deliver, to make it easy, it's an outside firm who's going to come and put, we gave them the list, say Jerry Kleiner, he's a single family, he's going to get two cans of the same size. Now, Jerry Kleiner, he says, hey, guys, I don't have a need for 95-gallon container. I want to have the 65-gallon container or the 35-gallon container. So you'll call, we'll call DPW, we'll come over there, pick up the 95-gallon after the original dispatch, after everything, because we can't make, you know, people want this and that, and we have company coming in as part of the deal with them, is to come and distribute those cans to everybody. So we're making it simple. Everybody's getting the 95-gallon container, one of each. If you're a single family, if you're two-family or above, you're going to get four of them, two municipal solid waste, two recyclable. At the very beginning, like the mayor said, you're going to use them for, you can use them for municipal solid waste. If you don't like it, you call us back, you say, hey, guys, I need an additional can, then we can give you an additional can for the fees, once you guys decide on the fees and everything, the common council. And if you say, well, look, I don't need, I don't need the 95, give me the 35, then we'll come and replace it in-house. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Fire chief?
I'm not going to be as long as them two. Good evening. For a month of March, we had a total of 71 calls. There was no major incidences. This Saturday, we did go down to Sufferin with our ladder truck to stand by while the Rockland County units did their final farewell to Jared Lloyd, the firefighter that died, fighting that nursing home fire. Good news is, we're looking at a parade for October 2nd. Invites have gone out. Got a few back already, they're all on board so far. I think changing the date actually kind of helped. And we have two cadets up at Montor Falls, they just finished up their third week, which is supposed to be their roughest week, and John Jonas, he has a 90% average score up there, and Trevor Barber has an 89. So they're doing very well. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief.
Professionally done.
What's the name of the second guy?
Police chief. Police chief.
Good evening. I'll leave and be quicker. I have nothing this evening, unless you have questions for myself.
That's it. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Unfortunately, I can't be as quick, because we're getting in summer mode, and the public's asking us a whole lot of questions, so I'm going to try to give some answers. One, April 1st, our offices were open, like city hall offices, people can come in and reserve pavilions. Since April 1st, we've already had over 20 pavilions paid for and rented, so get in quick if you have reunions and things coming up this summer, because it's filling up. This spring, programming-wise, we're going to be running a soccer clinic right at the new facility on County Route 78. It's going to be for three- and four-year-olds and five- and six-year-olds. There is now the Soccer Club of Middletown. They will soon be holding a registration. As soon as we get information or finalizing their permits, we will help them get information out to the public. They will be running, just like Little League is run, just like youth football is run, it is a board of residents that are running a league. They're doing a very good job, very organized, so ages seven and up will actually be in the Soccer League of Middletown. We're running computer science programs, we're running art classes for young kids and adults. Our teen center will now be starting up again, not traditional, how we had it at the other, at Academy Avenue, for two reasons, the facility is different and COVID. So what we will be doing is, there'll be youth fitness for kids younger, under eight, there'll be teen fitness. We're also doing adaptive fitness, that's with people that have physical challenges, that's a program. On Wednesdays, we will have open gym for ages 12 to 18. There'll only be 13 kids allowed in for an hour. All of this is free, the fitness program is, too, but they must register online on our base system. That'll be our tracing, our tracking. So 13 kids an hour can come in for the open gym, where it'll be staffed, masks worn, and all the safety protocols. We have 15 minutes between every hour for sanitizing and cleaning. So that's some of our spring programs right now. This summer, this is a big one for the public, there will not be sports camp. The school district, between COVID and construction, we cannot use the school building. We also will not be able to run a traditional sports camp and meet COVID guidelines the way our sports camp is implemented. However, we will be having camp programs, and you'll actually have more offered to you. We are going to have our little people playtime for ages four- and six-year-olds at the new facility. There'll be seven weeks worth of that program, every week being a session. We will have an adventure program in the back of Davage. There'll be two age groups, one ages six to nine, and one ages nine to 13. Forty kids can sign up poor group, and then they'll be put in teams of 10 with a counselor, and they stay with that team all week long. So now, if there's an issue with COVID, it's just that team that has already been isolated would have to go. So we have, so the adventure program alone would be 80 kids up there, 40 in one big pavilion, 40 in the other. We're working on all the programming. There'll be a sports program in the front of Davage, same thing, ages six to nine, probably meeting in the lion shelter, ages nine to 13, probably meeting in the small shelter. Various sports will be played, we have lots to use there, between swimming pools and a basketball court and the ball field, and we can put up a net, and we got disc golf, and we can get very creative. Seven weeks worth, so it's more. We're going to have a spirit program at Maple Hill, younger kids in the Maple Shelter, older kids in the Isaac Shelter, again, 40 in each age group. So you're getting the picture. That spirit program will be your performing arts, your dance, your crafts. So we're trying to break everything up. Anybody has questions, please call the Recreation Department. Any of you that have questions, please reach out to us. Those registrations, we are hoping to have them out probably by the beginning of next week, the following week. We're finishing up some RFP grants that got to get out, and then we'll have registration out. But you can call at any time with any questions. Our pools, right now, the plan is to have our pools open. We have to sit down and really make a plan, because social distancing, it's not about capacity, it's about social distancing. So if you leave six feet between a lot of people, even Davage Park Pool can't have a lot. So we have to make it safe where there's not a line. You know, if you can only have 70 people in the pool, what am I doing with the other 200 in line on a hot day? That can't happen. Ray Lynn, Nicole, myself, along with, we've actually, we're talking to Sergeant Welch, too, because we'll probably end up needing a little help from the police department. We're trying to put a very good, safe plan together. Once we have that, we will share that with you and with the public. The last thing, you'll see there's a resolution tonight with the Little League Parade. I like the mayor's email, it's kind of more of a Little League march, there's no band or anything. They're not going to have opening ceremonies. I spoke a lot to the Little League representatives about, okay, you're going to drop them off at Presidential Elementary, all right, the parents can't, like, usually walk with them when there's a cluster walking down, it would just be the coaches. Parents could be along the parade route, my big concern. They had to give me a plan on how they would pick up the kids, because we know what that would look like on the bottom of Watkins Avenue. So a lot of the teams will go and play in a game. Those teams will march with their coaches straight to the fields in which they play, which then the parents can go and set up their chair, two people per athlete. What they'll have is, the T-ball will all go, like, to the soccer one field, the minor league will go to soccer, march right to the soccer two field, you know, the major league will go to the Babe Ruth Field, where they'll be all spread out. These parents are being notified in a letter ahead of time, in email, they know that's where they go to pick up their child, so you're not seeing, they're coming from every angle of Watts Park instead of everybody at a geek. So I think they have a good plan. There's no floats, there's no bands, it's just them walking, that traditional walk to Watts Park, no opening ceremonies where everybody's clustered together. If there's any questions, you know, I'll be here to answer it when you get to new business. And that's all I have this evening.
Any question for Chris? Chris, I see in New York City, July 6th, they're opening up their basketball courts. Are we going to follow suit?
We have been talking closely with the mayor. The concern is our high numbers. He has been checking the governor's office, he's been checking with other rec. You want?
Chris has inquired several times in the public, and I think one of the previous meetings, I did update the council, basketball courts are still considered high-risk under the New York State guidelines. So we're taking the cautious approach, and we are not opening the basketball courts at this time, as long as they remain high-risk. The activities that Chris is referencing, even the gym, is limited to 13- that Chris is referencing, even the gym, is limited to thirteen people in the gym. There are activities that we're offering, but they're in a controlled setting. But to just put the hoops back up on the basketball courts, would, I believe, would be irresponsible. And although many people, including people in the Rec Department, would like to see it, we all wanna see it, including myself, it's not practical at this time to do so, as long as that activity is considered high-risk under New York State guidelines.
Any other questions for you?
No questions. Thank you, Chris.
Right.
City clerk?
As the mayor had reported, we're trying to do more things electronically, especially in our department. And on the agenda tonight, we have an agreement with Edmund's GovTech, was formerly BAS, for a new digital foil system. This will be all electronic. It'll be on our website, where the public will be able to go in, fill out the foil form on the website. It would automatically be emailed to my department, and then we would send it out to the departments that there have to do the reports. They would scan those results, put them, send them back to us, and we would email them right back to the public. So it's gonna make, save a lot of time, because right now, everything is done, just copying paper, calling them to come in, and whatever. So since we're doing it electronically, they will not have to pay for it. If we print it, then they have to pay twenty-five cents, but, a page. But usually, they're two and three pages. It's not worth it. It's, it's better just to email them. It's gonna be, they only have to come into City Hall to do this. Last year, two thousand twenty, we did one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven foils. So I'm hoping that will save a lot of time. Even twenty-five cents a page, it still doesn't come up to that much of the time that we're gonna be saving, I think, with this new system. So I hope that you will all vote for it. Anybody has any questions, I'll be willing to ask. But that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances?
Okay, tonight, we have a public hearing for the proposed rezoning of a strip of five parcels on North Street. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 6th, on or near eight PM as possible, Common Council Chambers, second floor, Sixteen James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed rezoning of, of a strip of five parcels on North Street, including the subject parcel from C1 Neighborhood Business District to the contiguous C2 Limited Business Districts. And they are three oh two North Street, three oh four, three oh six, three oh six and a half, and three oh eight to three ten. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed change of zoning. The complete proposed zoning change was available in the Common Council Clerk's Office, City Hall, James Street, Room Twelve, and also on the city website. The public hearing shall be conducted in person and also via teleconference and live on Channel Twenty for viewing. And the link was there for anybody to sign up to call in. For any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing, email comments may be submitted in advance to my email. And this was published in the Times Herald Record on March twenty-fifth and March twenty-sixth, and also on the city website.
Okay, it's time the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public have any comments? Anyone online?
Not at this time.
Any council member have any comments? Do I have a motion to close?
Go move.
Alden Massey, seconded by, Alden Johnson. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Let's move. Okay. Marks of Alden, Alden Massey.
Nothing this evening.
Alden Tobin.
Nothing this evening.
Alden Green.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Kleiner and I will be having a second ward constituents meeting on Monday, the twelfth, at Davage Park, at six PM, at the Lions Pavilion. So it's Monday, the twelfth, six PM, at the Lions Pavilion. It is good news about the garbage can arrival, so I'm very happy to see that come through. And, and there will be growing pains, I'm sure, but we're gonna get through it, and I think it's gonna be a big win for everyone in the city. As well, you know, I know that there is some opposition to getting vaccines, but I can tell you that they work from personal experience, and it is very worth getting. So, you know, definitely keep doing that. And just make a note, Middletown is, is no place for any form of hate, regardless of race, color, sex, creed, you know, especially with our Asian community and our growing Asian population here. It's very disheartening to see what's going on in some areas of the country, and I'm very happy to support this resolution tonight. Thank you very much.
Alden Johnson?
So, I guess in my older age, I've come to realize that everything is simple until you go to do it. And with respect to the O&amp;W, I still have a lot of reservations about that project. I was on the school board for many years when we retrofitted buildings, and there was always a complication and change order, like the wall didn't have any supporting structure that we thought was there. I'm currently the president of the Coral Crop Extension Program. We started a project ten years ago that was gonna cost seven million, and now is costing us twelve million due to setbacks. I sat on the school board when the library project was done, and we wanted to have an addition that would look like the original. And we found a guy that did historic recreations, and that worked out well. There's a method to my madness. The mayor has cited the Woolworth Building and the vanilla box, I get that. I walked through, I walked through O&amp;W. I, I don't see a vanilla box coming out of that building. And I know the estimate to start the project, so one point eight, I think, could turn it to ten million, long before I'm alive, or long after I'm alive. I threw out the idea with the library of, what about the idea of raising the building and then recreating the building to look like the original building? I know it won't be the exact same building, and that may get some people upset, but it may be another option. With respect to the Asian-American Proclamation, I think it's all, the situation speaks for itself. We're now in a culture where Jim Crow and steroids is a term that we're using to talk about things. Now we can think about Japanese internment camps. And we can think about all the people in our culture who say, if you don't look like me, it's not really gonna work out very well for me. You're stuck in your box, but try not to let the box leak out into the rest of us. Thank you.
Alden Cassoon?
Good evening. I just have three things this evening. As for the new cans and the potential rollout of this garbage plan, all I have to say is, hallelujah. As for this proclamation, obviously fully support it. And I guess I'm just finally reaching that level of frustration that we have to keep having this conversation again, and again, and again. And I don't know how many different ways you say enough. You know, one race, human race, it's gotta stop. And that's where I'm at, obviously, in full support. Spring cleanup. Third ward, it starts next week. And I just wanna say, for the people who do this for us every year, and it's a huge service to us as residents, please follow the rules, please look, and please be respectful of the people who are cleaning up your mess. It should not be scattered all over your lawn and front of your property. Sometimes the things I see make me very, very frustrated. So that is all I ask of our residents, to be respectful of the people who are doing this for us, and to be respectful of the timeframe, and to stay within the guidelines of your ward, so our city doesn't become a disaster. That is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you. It's exactly two weeks today from when Barbara and I got our second COVID vaccine. So I actually feel comfortable taking the mask off to talk. I will put it back on, out of an abundance of caution. But, you know, for anyone who ever traveled internationally, you had to have your vaccine record with you. It wasn't a question. You didn't have it, you didn't go. And it's, it's so much a part of our history and so much common sense. And Barbara looked at Saturday's paper, and she goes, slow news day? I thought that was an appropriate comment. But it's not that I don't have many short-sleeve shirts, it's that I don't have any, not a single one. And it was February. So I have a lot of ratty old flannel shirts, and off came a sleeve. So that's, that's, that's the whole story. But I encourage everyone to get vaccinated. That's how we're gonna get out of the pandemic and no other way. So I hope people do. I thank the mayor for his proclamation, and I hope we're gonna endorse it by acclamation unanimously. And for people who don't understand that originally, only white male property owners could vote, we, we're changing as a country, and we need to change. And I encourage people to Google the Chinese Exclusion Act, starting in eighteen eighty-two, when we simply stopped any Chinese laborers from entering the country. We had the nineteen seventeen Immigration Act that extended the ban and did the same thing. Nineteen twenty-four Immigration Act that set quotas, except for Asian Pacific people, the quota was zero. You know, it, nineteen fifty-two Immigration Act, Truman vetoed it, but Congress overrode it, and it had the same restrictions. So we're talking about not until the sixties and seventies that we really took any action to correct this. So this is not new, and it raises its ugly head every now and then. So absolutely should all support this declaration by acclamation. Andrew did mention our, and, and Chris said the pavilions have been renting out quickly, but I, I did call long ago and ask for the Lions Club, so I'm gonna double-check and make sure. But that's, it will be nice to have a constituents' meeting again. Yes, okay. And that will be next Tuesday, from, we said, from six to seven, because it'd be warmer, it's staying light longer, and it seems like a safe way to do it. So we hope to see you then. Thank you.
Alden John Francois?
Yes, good evening. It's exciting time, spring cleaning. I mean, we all have junk in our garage we wanna get rid of. I mean, it's a good time for the city. It's good to see. But the issue we have every year, it's illegal dumping. It's cost a lot of money. And I can see, especially this year with COVID, a lot of people staying home, a lot of projects is going on. They're waiting for the opportunity to do a lot of illegal dumping. I wanna ask our residents to be vigilant. If you see anything, please call our police officers, because it's costing us a lot of money, and it's uncalled for. And with Alderman, Alderwoman, when Cassoon mentioned, a lot of time, the mess come from the pickers. It's not really the homeowners. They'll come around, you set your stuff outside in the front lawn, nice and neat, but they come around at night, they pick out of it, you know, they take what they want, and they make a mess behind. And that leave that for us. And you have people coming from other town and dumping stuff on us. And our man is liable to pick up, what's, what's the amount that we have, Commissioner?
Twelve items.
Twelve pieces. A lot of time, we have a lot more. But you have to be vigilant, because if our man don't pick the rest of it, it's up to us to pay for someone to pick it up. So please, be vigilant. Let's try to put a stop to it, because it's costing us too much money every year. There's no need for that. Thank you.
Alden Burr. New business.
And we have a resolution sponsored by Alden Massey to renew an intermunicipal agreement between the city of Middletown and the city of Port Jervis for a shared use of the city of Port Jervis Range Training Facility.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Tobin to authorize the treasurer to record budget transfers within the two thousand twenty budget to clear up overages payroll-related expenses.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Tobin, seconded by Alden Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Green to approve a replacement of the city's municipal COVID enforcement software with Edmund's GovTech BAS.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, seconded by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Edmund's GovTech BAS for a new digital foil system.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, seconded by Alden Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Graham Cassoon to approve a fire department policy and procedure for the fire department video surveillance system.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Graham Cassoon, seconded by Alden Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner to hereby reaffirm the negative declaration determination of significance for SECRE for the replacement of water tank at Manhattan Avenue and addition of a second water tank at Pilgrim's Corners.
Mountain Avenue. You have Mountain Avenue?
Misread as Manhattan.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all in here.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner, seconded by Alden Graham Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois to approve a reverse transfer of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Resec Guy Mart purchase to replenish the sewer fund balance, because the money is available in the capital accounts.
Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois, seconded by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr to approve a transfer of twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the asphalt only of the upper parking lots between Washington Street, South Street, and Equilibrium Brewery.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr, seconded by Alden Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey authorizing the closing of streets for the Middletown Little League Parade on Saturday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, subject to the approval of the New York State Required COVID Safety Plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Tobin to condemn discrimination in all its forms, and specifically condemn recent attacks of aggregation and hate crimes perpetrated against Asian-Americans.
Resolution by Alden Tobin, seconded by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Green to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents and certifications regarding the two thousand twenty-one CDGB Action Plan and authorize the submission of the two thousand twenty-one Action Plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, seconded by Alden Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon for the mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Orange for maintenance and operation of signage at the intersection of Monhegan Avenue and Seward Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon, second by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I had a discussion with Maria and the mayor about this, that county wrote the agreement, and it's been a long time coming for the new sign. But just because the language says at the intersection of Monhegan Avenue and Seward Avenue, that's because where the sign is, the section block and lot number is Seward Avenue. But the sign is actually at the intersection of Monhegan and Emma Avenue. So just if people are concerned or there's any confusion about it, we know that's Emma Avenue, but the legal language says Seward Avenue, so you know where it's going. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to rezone a strip of five parcels on North Street from C1 Neighborhood Business District to the contiguous C2 Limited Business District.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to approve a purchase of a new dump truck for the Department of Public Works and approve a transfer to fund the purchase.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, second by Alderman Burr, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve the 2021 electronics drop-off on September 18th, 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman John Francois, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer to be authorized tuition warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Move for adjournment?